Father meeting of the city council to order for Monday evening, January 14th, 2019. Standards we salute our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, Mr. Clerk. Pleased to see everybody here this evening. As we start off this evening, as you know, we elect our new city council president for the year 2019. So without any delay, nomination for council president for 20 years for the year 2019. Nominations are now open for the president. See, at this time, Council Sullivan.
President, I'd like to nominate Councilor Lodge, Moises Rodriguez.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we're going to nominate Counselor Rodriguez. Any other nominations?
Motion's been made.
Motion's been made and seconded that we're going to close the nominations. At this particular time, City Council Lodge, Moises Rodriguez has been nominated to be our next president. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Azak? Councilor at Lodge, Moses Rodriguez.
Borogar?
Counselor at Lodge, Moses Rodriguez.
Cruz?
Moses Rodriguez.
Darren Onkort?
Moses Rodriguez.
Inieri?
Dennis Inieri, I mean Counsel Rodriguez.
Farwell?
Counselor Moses Rodriguez.
Lally?
Counselor Moses Rodriguez.
Monahan?
Moises Rodriguez.
McCastro?
Counselor Moses Rodriguez.
Rodriguez?
I guess Counsel Moses Rodriguez.
Solomon?
Counselor Lodge, Moises Rodriguez.
Eleven in the affirmative for Counselor Moses Rodriguez.
And at this time, we say like this. Motion to make a motion for reconsideration, hope it does not prevail. Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? Ah, all opposed? Reconsideration fails. Counselor, City Council President Rodriguez, if you'd come forward, please. I would like to present you with, this is the temporary gavel. The big ham is still up in the council chambers. But I want to present you with this. You're going to use the gavel and you got this block to use. And you know, as a city clerk at one time used to say, the formulae J.J. Lyons used to always say, use it often, use it wisely. You are in charge. So at this point in time, that's your gavel to handle, and I'm sure you'll do a fine, outstanding job. Look forward to working with you in that position. Okay? Thank you. And I, Mr. President. Any words of wisdom at this point?
Well, I'm actually going to do this first, then I'm going to tell you a couple of things.
Okay, and then you'll let me have a couple of...
Absolutely.
And I'll sit down and it's all yours.
Absolutely. I, on behalf of the, our colleagues in the city council, would like to make this official presentation to you. It's another one of the gavels to be added to your collection. I know you've had, you have several of these. That's why you've got one on loan for us. And we appreciate everything that you've done. I mean, we had a real tough season in the sense, jumping from one site to another, but finally we found our way. And hopefully, we will soon be in the chambers where we belong, and we will continue to do the work of the people in the city. Because one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that we were put in here to do the will of the people. We got to forget about our personal biases and the way we see things, and do what's best for the citizens of this city. So congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that very much. But believe it or not, it does add to my collection. And there are a few that say Vice Chairman of the School Committee as well. I was on there for 20 years. I was also the Vice President of the School Committee a couple of times as well. Am I right there, Mr. Mayor? That's when you were mayor, too. Exactly. But I appreciate this, and I don't really have much to say in the way of, you know, words of wisdom, other than, you know, I do want to say thank you. And as always, I've always treasured the moments of being City Council President. And even as Council President Rodriguez has mentioned, it's been a challenging year, and I think this year is going to be another challenging year as well. But I think we can all do it, and we can all do it working together. You know, I, at this point, don't foresee any complaints, and I don't have any requests, and I don't have any regrets, but I do want to say that, as we've always said, and Counsel Brophy always said, that once a president, always a president. So with that being said, I appreciate this, and I wish you the best of luck, and I wish the council the best of luck, too, and God bless. We'll all work together, no doubt. Thank you. I want to get my things out of the way, huh? Thank you, thank you. Let me take my name along for the ride.
Oh, look at that. I have an aide already.
Absolutely.
Mr. Clerk, shall we continue with the agenda?
We shall. The acceptance of the minutes of December 27, 2018, City Council meeting.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have an appointment, a communication from the Executive Director of Brockton Housing Authority to the mayor informing him that the resident commissioner, Sandra Proctor, wishes to resign, and also suggesting Carol Roberts as a candidate, understanding that it is the appointment of the mayor.
That, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor submitting a letter from the Executive Director of the Brockton Housing Authority stating the resignation of Resident Commissioner Sandra Proctor from the BHA Board of Commissioners, and a recommendation of Carol Roberts to replace her.
That, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
We have the communication of Carol Roberts of 755 Crescent Street, Brockton, Mass. to the Brockton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term.
Now we refer to the Committee on Finance.
I'd like to make a motion to take numbers five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 collectively, and also act on the suspension tonight on these.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded, that we take five through 10 collectively and act upon it tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So be it. Mr. Clerk?
We have the appointment of Carol Roberts, 755 Crescent Street, Brockton. Oops, strike that. Reappointment of Spencer Benoit as a Special Police Officer, City of Brockton, for a one-year term ending January 2020. Reappointment of Daniel J. Vaughn, Special Police Officer, City of Brockton, for a one-year term ending January 2020. Reappointment of Jennifer Zell Hancock as a Special Police Officer, City of Brockton, for a one-year term ending January 2020. A reappointment of Jason Mosley as a Special Police Officer, City of Brockton, for a one-year term ending January 2020. A reappointment of Julie Marshrell as a Special Police Officer, City of Brockton, for a one-year term ending January 2020. Reappointment of Kevin A. Smith as Special Police Officer, City of Brockton, for a one-year term ending January 2020.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak? Yes. Borogar? Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Onkort?
Yes.
Inieri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Suppose I make a motion for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. Motion's properly made for reconsideration, hopes that it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? And they're being reappointed.
We have the hearing, petition of National Grid and Mass Electric to install three new poles, P one-half, P sixteen and one-half, and P eight, and reroute overhead electric wires, and ought to remove the electric wires between pole six dash one and pole seven due to it being too close to the building. Customer installs scaffolding next to the building, number 88 North Main Street.
The time has arrived, and I declare that hearing open. Is there anybody in favor of this petition? There's anyone in favor? Please step forward and give your name to the clerk.
My name's Sam Young, National Grid chairman, and I'm representing, get this project, please. Basically doing as the court said, we are trying to relocate these primary wires that are currently in front of the buildings, and rerouting them to both ends, so there will be, won't be much interruption of service. It's basically getting the wires away from the building. Apparently, there's scaffolding, they probably do some constructions over there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor? Hearing none. That portion is closed. Is there anybody in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Well, I'll close that one, too.
Granting will be at the end of the meeting.
Oh, we'll act on this at the end of the meeting.
We have the petition of George Brewster of 25 Main Street, Weymouth, DBA Brewster Ambulance Service for transfer of garage license located at 1531 Main Street, in Clerk's office, October 22nd, 2018. Hearing assigned for January 14th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Fire Department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is anybody here in favor? Please give your names to the clerk.
Yes, I'm James Bibby, representing the Brewster family.
Do you have a statement for us?
Well, I was asked to come here regarding the permit for the building we're currently in, and has been in for over a year now. I guess the permit that was prior did not transfer over, so we had to go through the paperwork process. So they asked me to come today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Susan McCastro, Ward Four, City Councilor. This property is located in Ward Four, and Jim and I have just had a conversation about this. There's a plot plan that's supposed to be attached to the application that is not here. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to refer this to Public Safety.
Second.
You got to do the, close that part of the people in favor of hearing, and then open the doors against. So you have to listen to those.
That will give us an opportunity to vet it out some more, get the plot plan, and complete the application.
May I have a counsel? I think we have to go through the whole process of the public hearing, and then at the end, you can make that motion.
Okay, then I'll withdraw the motion at this time. Thank you.
All right. Is anybody else in favor of this petition? Hearing none, I close that part of the hearing. Is anybody here in opposition to this petition? In opposition?
No one.
I close that. Now, Counselor, you can make the motion if you wish.
Thank you. As I was saying, I'd like to make a motion to refer this matter to Public Safety, just to address a few things with the application.
Second. Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of sending this to Public Safety? Anybody opposed? Public Safety, you shall go. And we will get in touch with you and let you know exactly when that process, process is going to take place.
He's going to be up for the next one. He's going to be up for the next one, too.
All right, next item.
Petition of George Brewster, 25 Main Street, Weymouth, DBA Brewster Ambulance Service for transfer of garage license located at 225 North Montello Street, in Clerk's office, October 22nd, 2018. Hearing assigned for January 14th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m.
I declare this portion of the hearing open. Please state your name and to the clerk.
James Bibby, field supervisor for Brewster Ambulance. Now, this is another property that was permitted prior to us buying the property, the Brewster family. And again, it did not transfer over, so we requested to go through the application process.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Hearing none. I'll close that one. Is anybody in opposition to this petition? Anybody in opposition?
Questions on granting.
Do you, would you like to make a motion?
Well, it's like Ward Five, and it just seems that he's, that someone will be representing Brewster Ambulance, the Public Safety, 41531. So it seems at that point that we should send 225 also. So I'd like to make a motion to do...
Second.
A motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of sending it to Public Safety? All those opposed? To Public Safety, you shall go.
Petition of Daniel Gill Jr. of 531 Summer Street, East Bridgewater, Mass., for garage license located at 12 Riverside Avenue, Brockton, in Clerk's office, October 12th, 2018. Hearing assigned for December 27, 2018, 7:00 p.m. Counselor McCastro, motion to postpone the next City Council meeting, properly seconded. The motion carried by a hand vote. Hearing assigned for January 14th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m.
The time, well, let's go through the...
We want to make a motion to take them collectively, 14 and 15.
I think because of their public hearing, I think we got to do them individually, right?
Okay.
The time has arrived that we open this public hearing. All those, is anybody here in favor of this petition? No one in favor?
We can't hear, we can't hear.
You can't?
No, him. We can hear you. We can hear you. We can't hear Tony.
I can't hear Tony. Okay, we'll just move Tony's.
That port isn't hooked up to the system. We can't transport the funds.
Oh, okay. I think we're going to share a microphone.
Share, okay. Right on. To the buddy system, yeah.
Is anybody here in favor of this petition?
The petition for the granting of the garage license at 12 Riverside Ave.
To Daniel Gill.
To Daniel Gill.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think Mr. Gill was able to be here this evening.
Okay.
Okay? I think he understood that deficiencies in the application were going to result in it being referred to Public Safety, or a motion to refer to Public Safety to enable them to be addressed and the application to be completed. So when it comes back here, we can go forward.
Okay. So let me at least close that portion out. Is anybody here in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, I'll close that. Now, you can go ahead and make your motion.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to refer this matter to the Public Safety Commission.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor sending it to Public Safety? Anyone opposed? To Public Safety, you shall go.
Petition of LML Auto Repair, Armando Mendez of 17 Myrtle Street, Myrtle Avenue, strike that, Brockton Braintree, Mass., is a motor vehicle repair body license located at 12 Riverside Avenue, in Clerk's office, October 12th, 2018. Hearing assigned for December 27, 2018, 7:00 p.m. Counselor McCastro, motion to postpone the next City Council meeting, properly seconded. The motion carried by a hand vote. Hearing assigned for January 14th, 2019. All paperwork on file. Fire Department has objections as it does not conform to standards outlined by Mass General R.CMR, R.O.C.L.B. Currently, there is no proper equipment to allow for painting, priming, and bonding on the premises pending the installation of the proper equipment to allow for painting, priming, and bonding, the approval of the equipment, and installation by the Fire Department. The Fire Department would then have no objections.
The time has arrived, and I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is anyone here in favor of this petition? In favor of this petition? Is anyone in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, I'm going to close that one as well.
Mr. Chairman, Armando Mendez and I are in regular contact. He is, his application is nearly complete. However, there are a few things missing, and so he was aware that I was going to make a motion to refer this to the Public Safety Commission.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of sending it to Public Safety? Anyone in the opposition? Public Safety, you shall go.
So be it. We have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of January 7th, 2019.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of Police Department requesting the authorization to expend grant monies related to the fiscal 2019 Municipal Police Service Staffing Grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the amount of $175,200.
That, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of the Fire Department requesting that the City Council authorizes the acceptance of expenditures in the amount of $125,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. The intended use of this grant funds will be for overtime necessary to maintain staffing levels.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
And accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of Police Department requesting that the City Council authorizes to expend grant monies in the amount of $544,527.37 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Junior Community Safety Initiative Grant, the City of Brockton Police Department, Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Jr., Community Safety Initiative Grant Fund.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
And that, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
And that, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of the Fire Department requesting that the City Council authorizes the acceptance of expenditures in the amount of $13,586 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Department of Fire Services, Fiscal 2019 Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant, $10,386, the City of Brockton Fire Department Fiscal 29 Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant Fund, and $3,200 for the City of Brockton Fire Department Fiscal 2019 Senior Safe Grant Fund. These grant funds will be used for fire safety education program.
And that will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
And that, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
And that, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Library Director requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance of expenditures of total grant funds in the amount of $9,253 from the Massachusetts Service Alliance to Brockton Public Library. These grant funds will be used to create a scalable training program for teen volunteers to work in the library's acre space.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Veteran Services requesting that the City Council authorize a transfer in the amount of $3,000 from the Veteran Service purchases of services to Veteran Services Personal Services other than overtime. The transfer will be used to hire a temporary secretary to cover the Veteran Services office until the office secretary returns from eternity leave.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the, from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That, too, will be accepted and placed on file.
Under unfinished business, we have the appointment of Jane Parker, 46 Lenia Avenue, Brockton, to the Election Commission for a term of four years, in council, December 27th, 2018. Ready to refer it to Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Azak? Yes. Borogar?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Onkort?
Yes.
Inieri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
The appointment of Eugene Marrow of 128 Healy Terrace, Brockton, is an alternate to the Brockton License Commission for a term of three years, in council, December 27th, 2018. Ready to refer it to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Will Madam Clerk, please, call the roll?
Azak? Yes. Borogar?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Onkort?
Yes.
Inieri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
We have a transfer in the amount of $131,900 from ambulance receipts to Fire Department purchase of services, in council, December 27th, 2018. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please, call the roll.
Azak? Yes. Borogar?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Onkort?
Yes.
Inieri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
A transfer of $40,000 from the Fire Department purchase of services to Fire Department overtime, in council, December 27th, 2018. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please, call the roll?
Azak? Yes. Borogar?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Onkort?
Yes.
Inieri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $20,460 for Mass Emergency Management Agency, the City of Brockton Emergency Management Agency, Fiscal 18, 19, Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant Fund, in council, December 27th, 2018. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption. Madam Clerk, would you please read the, call the roll.
Azak? Yes. Borogar?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Onkort?
Yes.
Inieri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $20,460 for Mass Emergency Management Agency, the City of Brockton Emergency Management Agency, Fiscal 18, Emergency Management Planning Grant Fund. There is a match required in the amount of $19,536.50 from Stabilization Fund, $19,536.50, from Stabilization Fund, $19,536.50, to Emergency Management Fiscal 18 Planning Grant Fund, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grants in the amount of $52,000 from the Mass. Environmental Protection Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant to Department of Public Works Sustainable Material Recovery Program Municipal Grant Fund, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant in the amount of $3,362.2 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research, Highway Safety Division, Fiscal 19 Traffic Enforcement and Equipment Grant Program to the City of Brockton Police Department, Fiscal 19 Traffic Enforcement and Equipment Grant Program Fund, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant in the amount of $3,497.40 in the form of 18 car seats from Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Fiscal 2019 Child Passenger Safety Equipment Grant, to City of Brockton Police Department, Fiscal 29 Child Passenger Safety Equipment Grant Fund, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Can we already do that one?
No, it's double. This is for 18 seats. The ones before was for traffic enforcement.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of $75,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass. Department of Conservation and Recreation, the City of Brockton Parks Department, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation in the amount of $150,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass. Department of Conservation and Recreation, the City of Brockton Park Department, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of $75,000 from Commonwealth of Mass. Department of Conservation and Recreation to the City of Brockton Parks Department, in council, December 27, 2018. Writing referred to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Okay, we have the Brockton United Ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is to create unity among residents of Brockton, whether born here or abroad, to welcome newcomers and to engage community members in building trust and solidarity between the different ethnic groups that make up the City of Brockton and the city's government.
That order will be... This item will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
We have an order of rules and regulations governing motor vehicles for hire, Chapter 159A, for the carrying of passengers.
Mr. President, items 48 through 52 are just something we do yearly to give the clerk the ability to do some of his job and make a motion. We take them collectively and act on them tonight under suspension of the rules.
The motion was properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of taking them collectively and acting on them under suspension of the rule? Anybody oppose? Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Assesses to act as agents of the City Council on matters of the provision of benefits. Clerk to give notice of hearings before the council. Regulations governing the operation of hockers and peddlers within the City of Brockton. Pawn brokers are to deliver a list of purchased pawn articles to the Chief of Police.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Will Madam Clerk please call the roll?
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The orders are adopted.
An appropriation of additional grant funds in the amount of $175,200 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Fiscal 19 Municipal Police Service Staffing Grant to the City of Brockton Police Department Fiscal 19 Municipal Police Services Staffing Grant Fund.
That will be referred to the Committee on Finance?
An appropriation of the total grant funds in the amount of $125,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research to 2019 Mass. Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, to City of Brockton Fire Department 2019 Mass. Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant Fund.
That too will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $544,527.37 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Junior, Community Safety Initiative Grant, to City of Brockton Police Department Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Junior, Community Safety Initiative Grant Fund.
That too will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
An appropriation of the total grant funds in the amount of $9,253 for the Mass. Services Alliances to Brockton Public Library. There is a $10,405.92 match required.
That too will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
We have an appropriation of the total grant funds in the amount of $13,586 for the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services, Fiscal 2019 Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant, $10,386, to City of Brockton Fire Department Fiscal 2019 Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant Fund, and $3,200 to the City of Brockton Fire Department Fiscal 29 Senior Safe Grant Fund.
That too will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
An appropriation of $3,000 for Veteran's Purchase of Services to Veteran's Personal Services other than overtime.
Mr. President, Counsel, please. Thank you. I filed this at the request of Mr. Farrell. He couldn't be here tonight, but I would like to take this on the suspension of the rules. It's a minor amount of money. It's just to cover a temporary secretary while his secretary is out on maternity leave. Thank you.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of taking it collectively and act on it tonight? All those oppose?
The question is the granting of the national grid and mass electric to install... Oh, I'm sorry.
So the question is on adoption. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Isaac?
Yes.
Borogad?
Yes!
Cruz?
Yes.
Deron Ancourt?
Yes.
Anary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
McCastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.